Can I ask everybody, please stand so I can salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask the clerk to call the role. The members.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Judy Garcia. Counselor Tenere Garcia. Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Coopero.
Yeah.
Counselor Vido.
President.
Counselor DeJesus. Counselor Haddenberg.
President.
Counselor Melinda Vega. And Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Yep, seven members present have a call in Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next order of business.
Resolutions.
Resolutions.
We have a resolution introduced by Counsel Robinson, all members of the city council. Whereas Paul Casino was born on April 8, 1943, the same room of Virginia Casino of Chelsea, Massachusetts, who grew up alongside his brother Richard Casino. Whereas Paul Casino began his public service career as a school committee member, where he served for four years. Whereas in 1976, Paul Casino became an alderman to the Board of Alderman. In 1982, while serving as president to the Board of Alderman, Paul stepped up as interim mayor when then Mayor Pressman received his appointment as the head of the Industrial Accident Board. Whereas in the summer of 1994, Paul and the Board of Alderman helped create and pass the charter of new government style that set this foundation for the city to transition from receivership back to its residence. Whereas in June of 1994, Paul stepped down from the Board of Alderman and was appointed to council clerk, where he served for the past 28 years, guiding many councils along the way. On December 31, 2022, Paul Casino has retired from the position of Chelsea clerk, thus becoming the longest-serving clerk in the city of Chelsea. Now therefore be resolved that the Chelsea City Council residents would like to wish Paul a happy and endless leisure. Thank you for your 50 years of service.
Counsel Haddenberg.
I wish to give out this resolution under suspension if there are no objections.
See no objections. So ask the clerk for the next resolution.
Resolution. ought to be introduced by Counsel Robinson, all members of the city council. Thomas G. Ambrosino. Whereas Thomas G. Ambrosino was born on November 21, 1961, to Frederick, Frederick Ant Margaret Ambrosino of Revere, Massachusetts. Whereas Tom Ambrosino began his public service career as a politician, then mayor of his hometown of Revere, Massachusetts, for over 15 years since 1996. Whereas in 2012, Tom Ambrosino became executive director of the Supreme Judicial Court, where he worked for three years until he was selected as Chelsea's next city manager. Whereas on July 20, 2015, Tom Ambrosino took office as city manager of Chelsea, where he would be for the next seven years. Whereas as city manager, Tom has initiated many vital projects within the city, such as launching 311, reimagining downtown Broadway, project park road enhancements, business, housing programs, Chelsea eats programs, and many other programs. Whereas Tom Ambrosino on December 16, 2022, was appointed as the next court administrator for the trial court, where he will oversee seven court departments and over 6,000 employees across 94 courthouses throughout the Commonwealth. Now therefore be resolved that the city of Chelsea, its residents, and many organizations would like to thank Tom Ambrosino for all his work throughout his public service career. We wish to congratulate you in your new position, and we know that you will be an exceptional administrator.
Counsel Coopero moves accept and follow communication under suspension. See no objections, so move.
Yes, I got the cloud communication.
Excuse me?
May I?
She wants to speak.
I don't know, I can't, I can't see your face very well.
Oh, sorry. You want to speak on the motion?
I want to speak on the, just on the resolution.
On the resolution?
I also want to just make a comment about the Paul Casino resolution. Only Paul Casino would read his own resolution, and that's just a testament to how committed he is to his work. But as far as Mr. Ambrosino's resolution, I just want to make sure that I'm echoing and amplifying the sentiments that are in here. I've had the honor of working with Mr. Ambrosino my entire tenure here on the city council. It's like, it's night and day if you really look at where we were before he started. We didn't have any holiday decorations down. There wasn't any mural, there weren't any arts. The community just wasn't as vibrant as it is under Tom's administration. What we've been able to do in the DPW department, creating the water department, a recreational department, reviving the youth commission. He was a really good listener. Whenever you would go into his office and you brought up any concerns, he always made it a point to listen. He gave some pushback when it came, I remember, I was joking with him recently, because when I first started on the city council, I said, "What's up with all of this development?" And he said, he said, "Counselor, in a city like Chelsea, if you don't develop, we die." And I thought he was being really dramatic. But as you start to really look at the city, because when you're on the other side of this, you really don't understand what's going on. And then you come here and you start to learn the process, and you understand you can only raise the tax rate a certain amount every year, and you realize all the needs that we have in the community. And so he, his ability to be able to break things down in layman's terms really made it so that we, as new counselors, were able to participate in a way where we really didn't know how. We were new to politics. We didn't, we weren't that familiar with Robert's Rules of Order. So being able to work with someone that was so patient and willing to break down things in a way that we can understand, just so that then we can share that with, with our constituents, with everything. Having someone that, that had an open-door policy, that was really open to just different ideas and different perspectives, somebody that looked at municipal government through a lens of equity. It's just been a real pleasure working with Tom. I never even called you Tom. Look at that. We're growing, Mr. Ambrosino. Being able to work with him and with the different city councils that we had on this side has really been an honor. I'm very emotional about him leaving, because I'm a little nervous about, you know, who we're going to have in that office, and they have big shoes to fill. I don't know what size shoes you wear, but they have big shoes to fill. So I'm really a little, a little nervous about it. But in the end, I'm just so grateful that we were able to have you as long as we did, and I want to thank you for your work and wish you all the luck in all your future endeavors.
Thank you, Counsel. Any other counsel would like to say? Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tom, it was an honor and privilege to work with you. We did a lot of great things here. Your leadership was, you know, A number one. As Counsel stated, not only did you have an open-door policy for the elected officials, but you actually had an open-door policy for the whole city. So I just want to wish you well and wish you the best in your next endeavors. Thank you.
Counselor Coopero.
There's many things we can say about Mr. Ambrosino, but the greatest thing we can say about him is that he works for the people. The actual people of our city are going to be the losers by him not being here. He, he puts the priority of the people into do a great job ahead of anything else. His whole thing of being here is to be a servant of the people. And that's what makes Mr. Ambrosino a great person and a great leader, because he's not a selfish person. He doesn't have any ambition for himself. His greatest ambition is to help the people which he works for. And it's been my honor, my pleasure to have you as a city manager. You'll be missed by this city. When you leave, they'll understand what a great asset you were to this city. Thank you for being a city manager, and thank you for being my friend and the friend of all of us.
Thank you, Counsel. Or Lisa DeJesus.
Thank you. So I had the pleasure of working with our city manager for a longer period of time outside of this council seat, and I just want to share that, you know, at the age of, I think I was maybe 22, 20, no, no, 25, anyways, years back, my first encounter with Mr. Ambrosino was inviting him to a room full of tenants. And I think it was one of, like, the first few weeks that he had come into our city to, to take on this, this seat. And these tenants had horrible housing conditions. And I did not know Mr. Ambrosino at all. I didn't know his background. I knew he was our new city manager, and he says, "If you have bad conditions and the landlord's not fixing them, and the landlord is not obeying the code, the laws for code violations, lawyer up and rent strike." And I was just in shock, right? Because I was like, wow, for, for our city manager to simply just, like, take off his city manager hat and say, "I used to be an attorney, and I'm going to tell you right now, you have the right to hold your rent if you're not living in decent housing." I just felt like that was, that was, that was so good for our city manager to be able to guide our tenants and to be just so transparent with our tenants and to truly want to support them. And Mr. Ambrosino, we're going to miss you. I, it was a pleasure working with you, and, you know, I know that you're going to the courts, and I'm sure that in the courts, you're going to do an amazing job, but we will miss you here in Chelsea.
Counselor Judith Garcia.
President, I want to echo the sentiment of many of my colleagues. Tonight is a bittersweet night for us, because it's our last official council meeting with you. And, you know, there is a lot that I've learned from many leaders in the public service space, and something that I've learned from you is, and I wish to take with me, is just aside from the open-door policy, aside from always being responsive, always saying yes to any event, even if there's 500 people or only two people, you always show up for our community. But what I love about you and what I admire the most is how humble you are. Humble you have, not only are you humble, but you have a very strong moral compass in every decision that you make. And we've seen that for the past seven years, that I've been a city councilwoman. I've seen you, I've seen you make amazing decisions in terms of the people that you hire. Your administration is by far one of the most diverse administrations. It is by far local administration that we've seen. We've seen leaders here that are taking decisions to serve our community, and that is something that really reflects what you believe in. So thank you so much for everything that you've done. You're certainly going to be missed. You have always cared for the strong immigrant community that chooses to make Chelsea their home, and you've also taken care of the voiceless, and you've always centered them in your policies. And thank you, because under your leadership and your partnership and always willingness to collaborate with a lot of the nonprofit organizations that have been leaders in this community, Chelsea has been able to shine throughout the state with the, with the eats program, with the Chelsea eats program, with the rental assistance program, with the eviction task force program. We have been leaders in the state, and that has been possible under your leadership. So thank you so much for what you've done here in Chelsea. Thank you so much for what you've done for our people, but above all, for what you're teaching the next generation of leaders of how to be leaders like you. So thank you very much, and I know you're going to be amazing at your next role. So thanks.
Tom, I'll save my remarks for Thursday. Counselor Taylor.
Also reserve some remarks for Thursday, but for now, I just want to kind of publicly thank you. One of, one of the things about becoming a city counselor and getting to see what actually happens in the city government, I was a little skeptical when I first came in, and I got to see actually what a good financial position you had the city in. And it was, it was, I was so thankful. And when I got to know you a little bit better, I, I realized, I became one of your, one of your bigger fans. And, and I think for all my constituents, I know every time I had a problem, I would email you and let you know what it was, and I would get, I would get an email right back. And I don't think there was ever really one time since I've been a city counselor that, that I couldn't get satisfaction with something, with a problem that I needed help with. So on behalf of all my constituents that have called me up with problems, including this last weekend, thank you for helping me solve those problems for the people. And I really want to express my gratitude and, and publicly let everyone know how much this guy has done for the city of Chelsea. He really has been an outstanding asset, and Counselor Vido is right about, you have big shoes to fill, and so thank you very much. I appreciate the job that you did, and it was a pleasure working with you.
Seeing no other speakers, next, next order. I'm sorry.
I just want to say it's been an honor and a privilege working with you, alongside with you, your leadership dedication and commitment to our city, how selfless you are, and it shows how much you love Chelsea. You definitely have, we definitely have big shoes to fill, and I don't think we're losers, it's definitely our loss, you know? But I'm happy for your new opportunity, and you'll shine wherever you go. So thank you. You will be missed, and yeah, I'm scared a little bit. We got this.
Thank you. Next resolution?
The next resolution, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., introduced by Counsel Robinson, all members of the city council. Whereas the late Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was a leader of great courage and skill who became known as a drum major of the American Civil Rights Movement to enfranchise black citizens. And whereas Dr. King's life was tragically cut short by an assassin's bullet in April of 1968 in Memphis, Tennessee, while he was there to champion the cause of underprivileged workers. Whereas due to the efforts of many dedicated people who believe Dr. King deserves national recognition, the third Monday in January is nationally recognized as a day to remember Dr. King, his legacy and the causes for which he so gallantly fought and died. And whereas Massachusetts had the privilege of Dr. King's presence, where he lived and studied in Boston at Boston University School of Divinity, receiving his PhD in 1953. And whereas Dr. King's life will always shine as a light for those without hope and as an example to be emulated by all who care about their fellow human beings, regardless of race, religion, class, or nationality. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council hereby recognize January 16, 2023, as Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day in the city of Chelsea, and ask all citizens to reflect upon the significance of this extraordinary man's life.
Counselor Brown moves to accept and follow communication under suspension. There are no objections. Want to speak on the matter?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, it's just great that we recognize this civil rights leader, this icon. It's important to our community that we continue to understand the movement and recognize the legacy of his work and remember and follow the, the dream that Dr. King gave us and also the message. And we were just talking about it when we were talking about our city manager. The, the will, the honor to serve others, especially those that's in need, and everything that was said tonight was a reflection of what Tom, our city manager, have done in his seven years here. Just a reflection of his leadership to serve those in need, to work with the city council members. And on this week, the city of Boston will be unveiling a statue of Dr. King and his wife, Coretta Scott King. And Tuesday tomorrow, they have a little gathering, but on Friday, they will be unveiling that at the Boston Commons. I take privilege and honor to be, you know, there for the groundbreaking, and I definitely will be there on Friday. But I think it's important for our community to be a part of it, to honor his legacy as we go into his birthday next week. I believe he would have been 94, 99, one of those numbers in between. But I think when we hear Dr. King, we, we know the work, the sacrifice, the legacy he left behind. But he also left what Tom has demonstrated in his seven years here, the will and the, the will and the passion to serve those in need. So I'm glad that we have this here every year, and we recognize it. Our church, Zion Church Ministry, we will be holding an event at the Conley Center on Chelsea Street in Everett. That's open on Monday, the 16th, at 9:00 a.m. If you need any information, please let me know. But it's, it's great to just get out and support any event that they have. I know they have one here, the People's A and E Church in the community, CBC are hosting some stuff. But it's important to get out and work with our schools and work with our community and keep that legacy alive. We are a part of what he started. And again, it's, it's a great honor to, to speak on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Next order of business is public speaking. Anybody here for public speaking? You may take the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Cherabiga, 21 Prospect Avenue. And I just want to speak to you. Are you going to be selecting the new city manager? So I just want to remind you that I'd like you to see that the city manager that you choose, chooses to live in this city and also has some experience. Now, many of you were probably not here when we went from city manager, I mean, from the elected mayor to city manager. I attended many of those meetings when the city charter was being written, and the first, the two top two things that all the people who attended those meetings wanted was that the person has experience as a city manager and moves into the city within a year. Unfortunately, when the selections came up on the first city manager, the, the city manager actually did not have any of the experience that was in the charter, which means they didn't have the city manager experience. So a city solicitor who's now, actually a past city solicitor, Kim Driscoll, who's now lieutenant governor, she was the solicitor, her opinion was that the person did not qualify, but the city council could override it. So that's what she did. Most of you were not there. And basically, you overwrote it, and which means that the city manager position became a training ground for, for city manager. And I know at least one of them went to be a city manager somewhere else. And I know local papers saying, oh, yeah, this position is used as a stepping stone. Yeah, that's fine. I mean, you've, you've been here for a long time, but I'd like to see somebody who's got the experience and somebody who wants to move into this city, not like the first manager, oh, sorry, I don't want to move my kids from Saugus to Chelsea, but when I got the job, move them to Peabody. So what does that say about your respect for this city? Right now, I get, it's been a long time, so a lot of people want to move in now. But does, when you, when you choose, choose somebody who, who does have some qualification, they're not going to be learning according to, you know, on the job. And especially, I'd like to see somebody who lives here. That's what the voters wanted. That's what people wrote it. And I was just mentioning, my late mother passed away about a year ago. She used to always say, she wasn't very political, but she would say, "If you don't live in this city, you don't care what goes on." So I'd like to see somebody who moves in here, because they'll be here when everybody else goes home from work, and they'll care more what's going on in the city, like the rest of us have to put up when they're not here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers for public speaking? Seeing no other speakers, we will close that portion of the meeting. Next order of business.
Approval of the minutes. We have the approval of the minutes, December 19, 2022.
Counselor Enoz Lopez moves to accept and follow communication under suspension with no objections.
And we have the special minutes of January 3, 2023.
Tenere Garcia moves to accept and follow the minutes under suspension. If there are no objections.
Okay. We now have communications.
Should be this first one.
I'll read the first one. First communication received from city manager Tom Ambrosino. Affordable units in Chelsea. Dear councilors, I am writing in response to the council order requesting an update on affordable housing units in Chelsea. I have attached for your review the latest subsidized housing inventory for the city of Chelsea prepared by DHCD dated April of 2022. This document provides a breakdown of each building with affordable units in the city. As you can see, DHCD recognizes 2,416 subsidized units or 19.19% of our total housing inventory. However, please note that the city has notified DHCD that a handful of subsidized units are missing from this inventory. Furthermore, more importantly, this inventory is based upon housing statistics from the 2010 census. DHCD does not anticipate updating this inventory with numbers from the more recent 2020 census until mid-2023. So this inventory and the percentage numbers are a bit misleading. Obviously, all of these units are occupied now by Chelsea residents. Unfortunately, it is impossible for the city to determine how many individuals residing in these units were previously Chelsea residents before occupying these subsidized units. You should note that the city does encourage all developers of new affordable units to provide a preference for existing Chelsea residents to the maximum extent allowed by federal housing laws.
Counsel Coopero moves accept and follow communication under suspension. You have the floor, Counselor.
Thank you. This is a very important subject to all of us, because this city does need affordable units, plenty of them, because there's plenty people. But the funny part about this report is, it doesn't really show you how many Chelsea residents are on these affordable units. How many actual people from Chelsea live in these units? And how do affordable units operate? Affordable units operate in, in, if you, if you look at this, what it has here, what it does is, every house, even if you own a three family and you have one affordable unit, you're tax exempt. Part of your tax, you don't pay. That's how it works. So a lot of these places here, when they come, it puts a burden on the tenants and the homeowners of this city, because what that does is, they don't pay their fair share of taxes. So everything else goes to everybody else, and the tenants, they pay the most. It's, um, I like affordable housing. I wish there was more affordable housing, but actually for the people of Chelsea to be afforded. The people of Chelsea cannot afford these houses, as they call affordable houses. 90% of the people really don't know. I didn't know how it worked. I learned. I didn't know how it worked. You build a, a building with 70 units, 10 out of those units are affordable. Seven out of those units will go to Chelsea people. So all the other units are not affordable for Chelsea people. They call market rate, which in return brings the rent up. And what they do is, they don't pay the same taxes as you, the homeowner. So it puts a bigger burden on the taxpayers of the city, one, and for another, it doesn't really help the people of Chelsea to get into affordable units. And I'm always hearing affordable units, affordable units. Yes, why don't you build a building 100% affordable units for Chelsea people? I'm for that. I want Chelsea people to go to these affordable units. All these companies that have all these affordable units, they get tax breaks. If you see, and here I can show you, they go back to 2040. Some of them, they tax exempt until 2040. So in other words, they get taxes for 30 years. They paid lower taxes. But it's not the city's fault. That's the way the system is. So in our city, I would like to see the system change. It's very hard to change the system that doesn't benefit the poor man. The system always benefits the rich person. It never benefits the little guy or the person that wants to rent the house. Yes, we need lots of affordable, but in return, the more affordable houses you built in this city, the faster they get rid of you. That's what happens, because what it does is, it increases your rent, because they've got market rate value, market rate value. A two-bedroom apartment is $2,400. You telling me the poor people of Chelsea are going to afford a two-bedroom apartment for $2,500, $2,700? How are they going to afford it? And then you say affordable houses, affordable houses. Yes, I'm for affordable houses for Chelsea people. For one time, make units available to the people that live here. Make sure that the next building that gets built in this city gets built with the priority to put Chelsea people in it. They deserve to get affordable housing units. That's the way it's supposed to be. It's very hard. I can't change it. I don't know if any of my fellow counselors can change it. The only thing we can do is advocate to make sure they put Chelsea people there. Chelsea people, affordable houses for Chelsea people.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counsel on the matter? Counselor Taylor.
Just, just wanted to ask one question through the chair. I believe the state put out numbers in 2014. These numbers are fairly antiquated, and so I didn't realize if, that we had to go all the way back to 2010. I believe the state put out numbers in 2014 that are more up to date than this and have an actual higher percentage of affordable housing, than 19%. I believe it's something like 21% or 22%, if I'm not mistaken. 24%?
Counsel, that inventory that you have, I think it has an April 2022 date on it. That is the most recent inventory provided to the city from DHCD. So they do send that list to us periodically. I believe that particular list is, has an I believe that particular list is, has an April twenty twenty-two date on it. The problem with that list, as I mentioned, is twofold. There are some subsidized units that are missing, and we've notified DHCD that there are, there's, there's some missing units. But the more significant one is the total housing unit number, that's the denominator, is based upon the twenty-ten census. That won't change until, they will change it eventually based on the housing statistics from the twenty-twenty census, but it's not yet reflected there. And apparently, according at least to the information provided from DHCD, they won't change that denominator until mid twenty twenty-three. As soon as they change that denominator, I expect our percentage, even with these additional units that are missing, will drop from the nineteen to something less. What it will be, I don't know. We'll still be far away, one of the communities in the Commonwealth with the most affordable housing, but we could be in the seventeen percent range.
So what were the twenty-fourteen numbers that the state issued?
I don't know. I don't have that document.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, next order of business? Sure, sure you can.
I would like to know, for example, the properties that are listed as expired or soon to expired, um, what is the process or the plan with those properties?
I believe that community development usually negotiates to extend those expiring contracts. And if I can, I'll suspend the rule and ask Alex to address that.
Okay. And do we know more or less if the negotiation did not work in favor of the affordability? How many have we lost?
I don't think we've lost any affordable units under, even when they expire, we, we usually compensate by extending the agreement working and, and contract with the housing people.
Okay.
Did you want Alex to answer? Alex, would you like to give us a little input on it?
I think if you, I think we should just move to subcommittee, had we been able to go in the meeting and, unless there's.
No, but that's fine. That's fine. I'll run the meeting.
So I'll be quick. Good evening, members of the council. So with respect to the expiring units, so our department formulates a plan for each expiring property, usually two to three years in advance of the expiration date. So for instance, on the inventory that the city manager provided, there are a couple of units that are owned by North Suffolk Mental Health that are set to expire relatively soon. So we have been in discussions with them relative to extending the affordability period on those. Generally speaking, we'll work with state agency and federal agency partners. Many of those partners have financed these properties at some point in their lifespan. They've given them loans, they've given them mortgages, and generally will prepare a package with the state and our federal partners of new financing. So it's usually like a new loan in exchange for forty or fifty years of more affordability after it expires. There are a couple of larger buildings that are upcoming that are on our radar. For instance, the senior housing down Broadway, the Chelsea Square Apartments, is a major one, as are a handful of others. So happy to talk further in a subcommittee or one-on-one with counselors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one. Next order of business.
Next, uh, communication received from Tom Ambrosino. Traffic lights on Broadway in Congress. Dear councilors, I am writing in response to the council order requesting an update on the traffic lights at Broadway and Congress Avenue. Please note that the installation of a traffic signal at this location is anticipated to be a component of the revitalizing Lower Broadway construction project. There will be several traffic signals along Broadway as part of that reconstruction. Unfortunately, construction on the roadway portion of this large reconstruction project is still several years away. In the meantime, the city will continue to explore options for improving safety at this intersection.
Counsel Recuperall moves accept and file a communication. You, you want to speak on the motion? You have the floor, Counselor.
This is a very dangerous intersection. I know that we were supposed to get a light. I get the communication and it says it'll be a few years before we do get a light. But meanwhile, um, they should, they should do something about it. Either they put a stop sign, or they should have an officer that goes there and directs traffic during peak hours, when the people are trying to move around. Because it's getting so bad within that area that it's impossible. It takes you such a, an extended time to go from one, if you live at the top of Congress to go to the mullahs, to Market Basket, as you know it, it will take you an hour. Sometimes it takes you an hour just to get there. And, and then when you get to the end, then, not, not to mention, when they shrunk the road, it used to be like, I know it was one lane, but two cars used to use it. Now they don't because there's a bicycle lane. So everything goes to one side. And when everything goes to one side, you can't move at all. So when you get to the end, there's two lanes. They still have a, something that goes to the left and something that goes straight. But if it's a one-lane highway, well, you've got two different ways. So, and what happens is the people do not stop going down Broadway. They don't. It's, they have a stop sign on Congress going down, but they don't have one on Broadway. So what it does, it creates a bigger mess because the people that are keep going this way cannot go. Even if there's one car at the top, traffic laws tell you, you stop at a stop sign until you don't see no cars going. So if you move and some, somebody hits you, it's your fault because there's no stop sign on the other side. So ninety percent of the people that know traffic laws will stop and wait for them to go by. So sometimes there's just one car coming down and you've got to wait for him to go through when there's fifty cars on the other side trying to move in. So the whole issue I have here is I know that eventually we're going to put one, but can we do something now? Either put a stop sign or make sure that we have an officer there to direct traffic so this will go smoothly and people will, because one day someone's going to get hurt really bad in that area. And I hate to be the person to say, I told you so. So if we can fix it, we should fix it.
Thank you, Counselor. Next order of business. Hold on, any other speakers?
Next communication from Tom Ambrosino. City manager, New England Foundation of the Yachts grant. Dear councilors, I am writing to request formal city council acceptance of a fifteen-thousand-dollar grant from the New England Foundation of the Yachts. Recently, NEFA notified the city that it had been awarded a fifteen-thousand-dollar grant. The grant will provide funds for artists to create temporary public art in the city. Specifically, NEFA will provide technical assistance for the city through its Department of Housing and Community Development to issue a call for temporary public art and then select artists to respond to the call. The art making will take place through the end of twenty twenty-four. I respectfully ask the city council accept the NEFA grant. A draft order of that purpose is attached.
Chair recognizes Counselor Haddelberg.
Motion to accept and file the communication under suspension. If there are no objections, there is something coming up on the new business.
Okay.
Next communication from the city manager. Notice of residency waiver intent. Dear councilors pursuant to the Administrative Code, Section one twelve point oh two, I am writing to notify of my intention to hire Mr. Julio Hernandez of Lynn, Massachusetts for the grant-funded position of APBA Business Manager.
Calvin Brown. Calvin Brown moves to accept and file a communication under suspension. If there are no objections.
Private, let me see, I've got one, okay. Next communication, private trash pickup from the city manager. Dear councilors, I am writing in response to the council order regarding, regarding private trash pickup. Notwithstanding the specific terms of the council order, I understand from discussion with the two counselors who signed the order that the real concern they seek to address is the problem of property owners avoiding the trash fee by opting out of the city program for pickup. But then instead of paying for the private pickup, putting trash out on trash day. The city does have a way to avoid this problem. We do ask for copies of contracts for private pickup before allowing owners to opt out of the trash fee. But to avoid the potential for cancellation of those contracts without notice to the city and then utilizing our city trash pickup services, we will ensure that our vendor, Boston Cottling, uh, Cottling has a list of locations that have opted out of our program. Boston Cottling will be informed that public trash pickup at those locations is prohibited. We hope this will minimize this problem in the future.
Counsel, Counsel Lopez moves to accept and file a communication. There'll be something coming up on the new business. If you want to speak on, you have the floor, Counselor.
We spoke to the city manager about this situation, and he said he was going to try to fix the situation where you would change, so, something where the, the companies would know exactly which ones are the houses that are not supposed to be picked up. And that's a good thing because I don't know how often it happens, but it does happen a lot of times where these people have private pickups and they wait for the day, the day when it's trash day, then they throw everything out. Or they borrow somebody's barrel or whatever it is. It's very hard for us to really control how this works. But the city manager said that he was going to try to have a solution or try to remedy the situation. So I have trust in him, or whoever the next city manager is, will try to fix this problem. So thank you very much, Mr. Tom, for trying, and I hope the next one will try harder. Have a nice day.
Thank you, Counselor. Next order of business.
Next communication from the city manager. Approval for departments to pay prior year expenses. Dear councilors, I am writing to request approval for our HR department and the school department to pay payments of prior year expenses from their respective FY twenty-three budgets.
Motion to accept and file a communication under suspension. If there are no objections.
Something will be coming up on the new business also. Thank you, Counselor.
The last communicate, no, I have another one here. Communication, capital project transfer request for downtown Broadway. Dear councilors, I am writing to request a transfer to allow for the city to fully fund the underground water and sewer work for revitalization downtown Lower Broadway construction project, spanning Broadway from City Hall to William Street. Please note that the city expects to get most of the funding for the work involving street sidewalk and drainage from federal highway funds distributed through the state's transportation improvement plan, just as we did for Upper Broadway. Further, any local costs associated with the surface work, such as an additional traffic signals desired by the city, should be covered by a two-million-dollar federal earmark secured for the city by Congresswoman Presley in the new twenty-twenty-two federal budget. But the remaining work for this downtown project, Broadway project, the underground water and sewer work is not part of the federal highway program. On such federal highway projects, the water and sewer utility work is always the exclusive responsibility of the local municipality. The anticipated cost of this utility work is anticipated to be approximately ten point four million dollars. Thus far, the city has available for this utility work approximately five point seven five million, four million in a mass works grant, and one point seven five million in the MWRA program. Seventy-five percent grant, twenty-five percent loan. This leaves a gap of just under five million. In order to cover this gap, I am requesting the city council transfer this downtown Broadway project, five million dollars in APBA funding previously set aside for the Kiriav reconstruction project. The city council originally approved this Kiriav capital request in the FY twenty-three CIP. Although Kiriav is an important project, it does not have the same priority as downtown Broadway. The city can't proceed with the Kiriav project once the downtown is completed. This sequence.
There's no objection, and we, something coming up on the new business also.
Communication from the city manager, I believe it's the last one. Notice of communication now, that was the regular ones. Communications and petitions to the council. Resignation. Dear councilors and city clerk, Centron White, I am writing to inform you officially that I am resigning as city manager effective Friday, June thirteenth, twenty twenty.
Chair recognizes Counselor Haddelberg.
I'd like to accept and file this communication and move it to a subcommittee of the whole subcommittee on conference. Um, I'd like that subcommittee to address Tom's resignation, consider the process for his replacement, and also begin to deal with the hiring and appointment of an interim city manager to fill the position while he is no longer in it.
We're going to move it to the subcommittee on conference under suspension. Seeing no objections?
Speak briefly.
You can speak briefly, Counselor.
So just, just in the interest of making sure the public's aware of what we're doing and, and making sure that this doesn't sort of slide under the radar screen, um, what we have to do, our city manager has informed us that he's leaving, we have to begin the process of replacing him. Uh, that's a complex undertaking. So we have here simply a communication. He essentially has said, I am retiring. Uh, what we're trying to do is we're trying to use that communication to organize a subcommittee where we begin to prepare the process of replacement. So it's an important subcommittee. It's, it's not simply a nominal thing. Um, and I would expect to do the three things that I stated in, in requesting the organization of the, the subcommittee here. Uh, we need to have an interim city manager because someone needs to fill the shoes when, when vacated. So we need to discuss that and get everyone on the same page. Uh, we need to begin the process for reappointment. And then if people have things that need to be recognized about, you know, our current city manager moving on, uh, we need to have the opportunity to discuss those. So for the public, it should be a, a significant meeting if there's, if there's interest in the process.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other speakers? Seeing none, next order.
New business, Mr. Chairman. First order under new business order introduced by Counsel Robertson. Order that the Chelsea City Council hereby authorize the city manager to accept the fifteen-thousand-dollar grant from the New England Foundation of Yachts.
Counsel Brown moves for a roll call. Vote on the adoption. Clerk will call the roll. A yes vote will be in support of the grant.
Counsel Brown.
Yes, for acceptance of the grant.
Counsel Judy Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
Counsel Robertson.
Yes.
Counsel Ray Cooperow.
Yes.
Counsel Vido.
Yes.
Counsel DeJesus.
Yes.
Counsel Haddelberg.
Yes.
Counsel Melinda Vega.
Yes.
Counsel Taylor.
Yes.
Eleven in favor and unopposed, motion adopted. Next order introduced by Counsel Robertson. Order that in accordance with the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, section sixty-four, budget management procedures whereby cost incurred in FY twenty-two were not paid in our ode to the vendors and to meet this obligation, funds are required from the current year FY twenty-three budget. That the city council authorize the expenditure of three hundred and sixty-five dollars from the Human Resources Department expenditure line to satisfy the following unpaid costs from the prior year. The department has sufficient funds to meet all these outstanding obligations. Therefore, no new funds are required. Mass municipal HR job posting for council clerk position, seventy-five dollars, cannot more employee reimbursement for annual medical card, ninety dollars.
Counsel Taylor moves to move it to a second reading under suspension. If there are no objections. Next order.
Next order introduced by Counsel Robertson. Order that in accordance with the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, section sixty-four, budget management procedure whereby cost incurred in FY twenty-two were not paid in our ode to the vendor and to meet this obligation, funds are required from the current year FY twenty-three budget. That the city council authorize the expenditure of three thousand fifty-one dollars and fifty-two cents from the Chelsea Public Schools expenditure lines to satisfy the following unpaid costs for the prior year. The Chelsea Public Schools has sufficient funds to meet all these outstanding obligations. Therefore, no new funds are required. Boston Municipal Life Insurance Employer Premium Balance due nine hundred twenty-three dollars and eleven cents, Scholastic News subscription for students, five hundred fifty-seven dollars, sixty-two cents, Lazarus Pezo School Transportation Reimbursement Fee, one thousand five hundred seven dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Counsel Judy Garcia moves it to a second reading under suspension. Seeing no objections, so moved.
Next order introduced by Counsel Robertson. Order that the sum of five million dollars appropriated from APBA funds under the fiscal year twenty twenty-three capital improvement plan for the Kiriav Water, Sewer and Roadway Reconstruction Project account, which has not yet been undertaken, will be deferred for later funding, for which no liabilities have been incurred. Is hereby transferred in the amount of five million dollars to a new APBA Downtown Broadway Revitalization Project number thirty-five oh six series.
Counsel Haddelberg moves it to a second reading under suspension. Seeing no objections.
I'd also like to ask, we scratched the N in front of the second five million just as a typo, so it's correct.
N, yeah, okay. Scratch it out.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Counselor.
Next order introduced by Counsel Cooperow and Counsel Lopez. Order that the city manager look into putting a detail officer at the corner of Broadway and Congress Ave to direct the traffic in the morning and afternoon when most traffic occurs.
Chair, under suspension, seeing no objections. You want to speak on the matter, Counselor?
Yes, yes. Yes, yes. I spoke on this earlier. It's the same thing at the corner. And I hope that something gets resolved. It should. And I know that this city manager we have now, he's leaving. Maybe the interim city manager can put a stop sign or put an officer there. And that's what I would like to see happen. I don't know if it's going to happen, but that's what I would like to see happen, and I hope it does happen. Thank you.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes. I've been complaining about this. People have been complaining also regarding the traffic for the last couple of years in that area of Pearl Park and Congress to Broadway area. Any time of the day, it can be weekend, holidays, or weekdays, there's always traffic there. Something needs to be done. Because like Counselor Recupero said before, if you live in Congress, or where I live in Shama, people who live in Esquinas, you've got to go around, come and get stuck in that traffic. Takes, like he said, half hour to 45 minutes just to get a market basket. I never saw that before. I don't know why now it is. I sent an email to Alex and Tom regarding that area from Broadway to Chestnut. Before, it was two lanes. Now, it's only one lane because of bike lane there. And that is making all that traffic. Something needs to get done, because, you know, people are always in a hurry. People got two jobs, three jobs, need to get to point A to point B. And we need to help our people. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next order of business?
Next order introduced by Counselor Robinson. Order that in accordance with Section 2-6 of the city charter, the city council goes on record so as to hire a part-time consultant and a clerk for the city council, Paul Casino. This position is temporary until the clerk's position is filled. The consultant and clerk pay will be $50 per hour, not to exceed 20 hours per week. This will be an hourly rate of pay only for the position and will not include benefits.
Chair recognizes Counselor Damali Vado.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to amend the order so that it becomes effective January 3rd. Technically, the council clerk resigned December 31st of last year. Secondly, I'd like to adopt, adopted by roll call vote, and I'd like to send a copy of this communication, of this order, to a subcommittee for the hiring process for the city council clerk.
Yes, both will. We'll send it to conference under suspension. Seeing no objections? This is a roll call. And the clerk will ask for a roll call on the adoption.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Judy Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Teneby Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero? Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus?
Yes.
Counselor Hattlerberg?
Yes.
Counselor Vega, Melinda Vega?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Eleven in favor and unopposed, motion adopted. And the final order is...
Final order for this evening?
Final order right now. Whereas the city council has received notice of Tom G. Ambrosino's pending resignation from the position of city manager, whereas the Chelsea City Charter, Section 4-5, authorizes the appointment of an acting interim city manager, whereas the incumbent deputy city manager, Edward Keefe, has agreed to act as interim city manager. And now therefore be it ordered that the Chelsea City Council, City of Chelsea, pursuant to the Charter, Section 1, 3, and 4, 5, hereby appoint Edward P. Keefe as interim city manager, granting him all powers, duties, rights, and privileges vested in the office of city manager by the Chelsea Home Rule Charter. It is further ordered that Edward P. Keefe shall exercise such powers, duties, rights, and privileges in accordance with said charter and the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the United States of America to revise ordinances of the City of Chelsea and Administrative Code of the City of Chelsea and to perform all other legally permissible and proper duties as the acting city manager and pursuant to unemployment agreement. Be it further ordered that the city council meet in subcommittee with Mr. Keefe as to terms and conditions of an employment agreement.
Chair recognizes Counselor Hattlerberg. There'll be actually, there'll be a roll call vote on the appointment, and then we'll also be moving it to a conference.
I'd like, if possible, to consult at the same subcommittee we just discussed.
Yes.
Send the same hand to approve and send to conference. Okay. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Judy Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Teneby Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus?
Yes.
Counselor Hattlerberg?
Yes.
Counselor Melinda Vega?
Yes.
And Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Eleven in favor and unopposed, motion adopted.
Okay.
Good. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Those conferences will take place on Tuesday, the 17th, the day after the holiday. 17th. And we'll take up all three of those positions on the 17th. Any public announcements? 6 o'clock. Chair recognizes, no release.
Thank you, President. So I just wanted to recognize that Friday, the 6th, was the celebration for those who celebrate Three Kings Day, El Dia de los Reyes, very big in our community. And I know that as a tradition in our culture, many of the children are putting out a little box with grass under their bed for gifts in the morning. And so I just wanted to mention that. And I also wanted to mention that last week, Chelsea's first state representative was sworn in. And it was exciting, to say the least, to be able to go to the State House for the first time ever to see one of our very own being sworn in. It was exciting to see some community members there anticipating the big moment. And so Judith, we are all so proud of you. Congratulate you in this huge win, and I wish you the best of luck at the state.
Just so everybody will understand the reason why we moved forward to vote on appointing Ned, because as of Friday, we would be without a manager. So therefore, it was important for us to make this motion at roll call vote tonight. And if we, as no other business before this council, will return. Oh, sorry. I asked. All right. I thought I did ask if there was any public announcement.
The Chelsea soldiers home, and he was there for a long time, a very nice person. And he passed last week of December, 2022.
Sorry about that, Counselor.
Okay.